Okay, is the audio fixed now? There's about a twenty second delay, so I will wait to see in chat if the audio is fixed.
You're still getting no sound.
It hasn't caught up yet. Okay. Great, thank you. Sorry for, told you it was my first livestream, um, if you were watching the captions, uh. So. Again, the agenda is for me to go over the initial, like what to expect on the test sort of information, and then I will go over some systems analysis stuff. Because I'm not sure if everybody on this has taken like an actual civil service exam before. But I know that we usually get a lot of people that are grade eighteens that have taken, uh, the skills and experience exam, but not an actual exam. Uh, just for your information, I do have a chat moderator today. Uh, Sarah is the chat moderator, different Sarah, not me, other Sarah. Um, so if you see Sarah Loginesse in the chat, she's helping me out by moderating and I also have, um, the tip jar open so that I can help pay her for her moderation services and maybe buy myself a nice new toy for my streaming setup here. So the tip jar is at ko-fi.com/tonertutoring. If you go to tonertutoring.com, you can also click there. Um, so we have a goal of three hundred dollars for all sessions. If you can't do anything about it, that's fine. But we wanted to make this accessible, so it's open and it's purely by, uh, tip jar that we would be making anything off of these. So let's get started with what to expect with the test. I'm gonna do a quick poll that you guys can answer as you go, that just is just like, have you taken an actual civil service test before? So I'm, I've got the poll going on. Um, I'll just tell you guys a little bit about what happens on the test. Starting with the fact that I know that people usually ask, they're waiting for their admission notices. And they ask when those are coming, because I know some people really wanna know where they're supposed to go for the exam. Unfortunately, the admission notices don't usually come out until the week before the exam. So you'll have to wait a little bit longer for that. The locations are usually either the high schools in the area or colleges in the area. And a lot of times you do have to sit at those little desks that have the chair and the desk attached to each other, which I personally hate a whole lot, but I guess we can all survive for a few hours of that. Um, so don't expect your admission notice until about the week before the exam. If you don't get it, there are uh, there are ways to call civil service, contact civil service. If you look at the original exam announcement, it's on there. The second thing I wanted to make sure you knew about exam studying is that there's something called the forgetting curve. So when you study something within twenty-four hours, you forget a lot of what you learned. So if you can look at whatever you've studied again within that twenty, first twenty-four hours, it actually helps to kind of flatten that curve out so that you forget things less. Um, when we do this studying about, especially about like systems analysis, if you can find some time tomorrow to kind of review what you've done, that would actually help you to remember longer. Okay, so that's just a promise to make to yourself. The next thing I wanted to talk about was how to do practice for this exam, how to get the best results out of practicing. Right now, we're about a little under a month out from the exam. So right now, I would recommend staying on focused practice, which is doing about one question at a time and then looking up the answer or finding out what the answer is and making sure you understand why that's the answer before going on to the next question. As the test gets closer, you want to simulate test conditions as much as possible. So you want to do a whole bunch of questions at once. And then uh, once you've got that completed, look up the answers and see how well you did. So while we're further away from the exam, do one question at a time. When we get closer, you can do a whole bunch at once in as close to exam conditions as possible. On test day, you can expect a bubble test. Uh, you'll need to bring pencils, erasers. It's about fifteen questions per topic usually. Uh, I don't know for sure because I don't work for civil service, and if I did, I wouldn't be able to give you this class, uh, the study group and that's just the way that they've had it in the past, which is about fifteen questions per topic. You have four topics, so that would be about sixty questions total. And the thing that a lot of people don't know, if you haven't taken a civil service test before, is there is a review opportunity one week after the exam. So if you take the exam on, I think it's April fourth, right? April second? It's on a Saturday. So, um, so you take the exam on one Saturday and then the next week, literally seven days after that Saturday, you might be assigned to a Sunday actually too, depending on the IT exams tend to be big. So you have to sign up while you're at the test to be able to do review if they're offering it. But what you get to do if they are offering review is bring reference materials in with you and see what the answers to the, some of the questions are and challenge if you think they don't have the right answer to those questions. It's one of the only ways to see what civil service thinks the correct answers are to questions. They don't always offer it though, but if they do, you do have to sign up on test day if you want to do that. So keep that in mind that that's an opportunity for you. The next recommendation I have for you about test day is to be on time. That one would be probably good for everybody to know. Make sure that you kind of, once you get your exam notice, you know where you're going. Make sure you know where to park. Sometimes parking is an issue. I know especially around Albany High. If you're assigned to that, people always complain about the parking in that area. Um, and leave your phone in the car if you can, because that will make sure that you're not accidentally forgetting to turn it off or bringing it to the bathroom with you and then getting uh, accused of trying to cheat or anything like that. So just make sure that you're on time and that you leave your phone in the car if you can. Now, after the exam, it can take up to six months to get test scores. So please be patient. Civil service has to go through all of these exams. They have to double check whether any of the questions might be biased or maybe incorrect. So it can take up to six months to get your results. And then the selective certification process happens via a survey that gets sent to you in your email. So you'll get an email from civil service that will say, please fill out the selective certification survey. Now selective certification filters down the lists. And that lets people, um, kind of specialize what the jobs are. So if somebody, for example, needs a Java programmer, they might do a selective certification to say, I need somebody with at least six months of experience in Java. And if you had said that you have that in your profile, you would get to remain on the list. If you didn't say you had that, you would get filtered off of the list. So it's just a filter. It's not quite like your initial grade eighteen application, because on your initial application, you were getting points based on which experience you had. In this case, all of your points come from the exam and your score is your score. But sometimes you won't be eligible for certain jobs because they were looking for a special certification or a special experience. So the selective cert process never changes your score. It just filters down the list. Um, if you'd like, I could go over how eligible lists work in general in our later uh, live streams. Let me know if that's something you'd be interested in. But I think for now, we should probably get to systems analysis. And if you have any other questions about how the exam works or about civil service system, um, you can go ahead and pop them in the chat, or you can send them to me an email. And I will try to get to them. So the first thing that I have as a recommendation for systems analysis is to go on a used bookstore of some sort and pick up a used, oh, some, there must be some green on this cover. Uh, pick up a used systems analysis book. This is Witten and Bentley Systems Analysis and Design Methods. This is an old edition that I got off of Amazon for about four dollars at some point. Um, I think since I've recommended this edition at some point, people, uh, have been buying specifically this edition out, but it, it doesn't matter which edition you choose. So this happens to be the seventh edition of this book, but any relatively recent systems analysis and design book would be appropriate. Um, and this will have a lot of general information about systems analysis in it for you. You can just kind of read through parts of that, um, whenever you have a few free moments. There's also, uh, Wikipedia as a great resource for you. So if you go to Wikipedia and look up systems analysis, you can start reading the article and then any words you don't know or any topics you're not that familiar with, you just keep clicking down and just clicking through Wikipedia to learn more about the topic in general. If you look at your exam announcement, it also gives you some other keywords. I'm gonna pull it up right here on my screen off to the side. Um, give me one moment. So I'm pulling up the exam announcement on the side here. And it says for systems analysis, right in the exam announcement, these questions test for techniques and concepts of computer systems analysis. They cover such subjects as feasibility and application studies, systems development tools and software, the systems lifecycle, types of systems like client server and web-based controls and systems documentation, testing and implementation. So any of those would be great keywords to put into Wikipedia to keep uh, researching in this particular topic.
There is a question in the chat about, um, how similar the questions are to the last time in twenty seventeen, or if there's new material.
The questions may or may not be from the same question. So the question in the chat, sorry, let me repeat, just in case people didn't hear. The question in the chat was about whether the questions would be similar to the twenty seventeen questions and they may or may not be using the same question bank, but I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't know that. If any of the information has become out of date though, they do go through and they update it and they have new subject matter experts that make new questions. So I would expect some new questions at least, but maybe some old ones to be repeated. And I will remind you that, um, one of our rules for these study groups and for anything on the NYIS ITS site in general is that if you have information from previous exams, you cannot share it. That is a violation of civil service rules. Please do not post in the chat or anywhere material from previous exams. Don't post material from experts who helped to write the questions. Don't post copyrighted material, including the CSEA booklets. Um, they are helpful booklets, but they are not something that we can distribute here. Okay? Um.
Okay, so more things brought up about the questions on your coffee. They were asking if you could go over the semantics because some of the semantics in the questions were tricky.
Okay.
And then somebody in the chat said that in different books and sources, there seem to be different terms and acronyms and it seemed like memorization of the exact terminology is important. And can we be confident about definitions?
Okay, so all of those questions kind of relate to the systems analysis topic in general, and I will be going over some of those as we go through the topic. So the thing to keep in mind here is that these questions are done by a, a group of subject matter experts in New York State. And they are only used for New York State exams. So they're not like industry standard terms. It's not like an industry standard exam. It's not like a Microsoft certification or anything. Any terms that they use though, will be very widely accepted and will be very, um, generalized to apply to any agency. So like if your specific agency uses one type of thing, uh, maybe you're using JAD joint application design. And that's something your agency knows really well, but other agencies might have no clue about it. That might be less likely to come up. So certain things are going to be kind of fair game. And other things might be a little bit too specialized. Anything that is only found in like one book is probably not going to be on there. Um, but if you can find research documentation saying that a question is ambiguous after the test, you can always email civil service or call them and say, hey, there was a question that was like XYZ and it seemed like that question was very ambiguous because here's my sources and they will put that into the consideration of whether that question should remain. So that's part of why it takes six months to get answers for some of these, um, the results.
Over examples of supervisor questions, correct or no?
I'm going over some examples of systems analysis questions today.
Okay. And then what section would supervisor questions fall under? Because that's what Dan is asking about and someone else is asking about that as well. If you look in the chat.
Mm-hmm. Um, I don't have the chat open right now because I was, I only have so much real estate on my screen. Uh, supervisory is not in this exam at all. The grade twenty-three exam this year only has four topics. It has logical reasoning using flow charts, preparing written material, which is those two types of questions, um, on organizing the sentences and then restating the paragraphs and then systems analysis and then understanding and interpreting a manual. There is no supervision listed as a subject of examination for the grade twenty-three exam this time around. So it's outside the scope of what we're covering right now. When they announce the grades, higher grades, I'm sure supervision of some sort will be on there. And I will be happy to go over the supervision sections at that point in time. And again, I'm just reminding you, there's about a twenty second, uh, delay between real life and the chat. So sometimes if I don't respond right away, just be a little patient and then uh, Sarah moderator will bring my attention to your chat questions. So thank you all. Um, any other general questions about the, um, exams? It looks like we have about fifty percent of you, by the way, that have taken exams before and fifty percent that have not. So welcome to all the new state employees. So welcome to all the new state employees that haven't had a chance to experience this lovely process yet. Alright, let's swap over to some system development lifecycle slides. Um, so I'm specifically doing system development lifecycle as the systems analysis practice here. And this comes from the New York State uh project manager's guidebook type stuff. All of the links to that is on the NYS ITS site. If you look for um hang on, let me just make sure it's in the spot. I think it's in. Yeah, if you look for system development lifecycle, um I will paste it into chat right now, actually. And this will give you the slides and it will give you the link to the source material, which is the the source material is um the New York State Project Management Guidebook. Section three is the system development lifecycle. And you can download that online uh and get all of this information there. Somebody is asking in chat, I happened to see it when I was facing that link, how to buy CSEA books by being a PEF member? And the answer unfortunately is that you cannot any longer buy CSEA books as a PEF member. Um, you can ask your fellow PEF members if they have copies you can borrow. Or you can ask other CSEA members if they have copies you can borrow or if they can buy some copies for you, but it's not a uh, it's not available to anybody except CSEA members anymore after the uh Janus Supreme Court decision that kind of hurt unions a lot, so.
So you're getting a ton more.
I do see more questions. Thank you. Um, how do you get across the test work like databases and programming? Those aren't actually separate parts of the test anymore. There used to be specific topics on databases, on programming, uh networking. But all of that now is covered by selective certification. So all you have to do is fill out the selective certification survey. And that's how they determine um which parenthetic things you would need. So if you see a a posting for an IT specialist three database, there's probably a high chance that they would want experience with like SQL in that. Captioning is not having a good time with this, with the acronyms. Um. And I see, is there a chance the test would be on Chromebooks? In-person tests are always pen and paper. So it would be a pen and paper bubble test or pencil, sorry, pencil and paper bubble test. Uh, as far as I know. I don't know anything about them giving tests on Chromebooks. The computer scheduling fall into any of the few sections? It is not in these sections, no. It used to be again more prevalent, but now it is not a thing really. Unless some of the logic might be a little bit similar to the flow charts, but again, the flow charts is the flow charts, so. If it's not written explicitly in the exam announcement, then it is not expected on the exam. Alright, let's get into these slides and go over some system development lifecycle.
Well, we'll keep an eye on the chat.
And Sarah moderator will keep an eye on the chat.
So another question, does this mean there's no tabular reasoning as well?
It does mean there's no tabular reasoning on this exam. You have been granted a reprieve from the tabular reasoning section. Where's my slides? There's my slides. Look at that. I know how to work my my software. Woo. A plus me. Okay. So system development lifecycle. Welcome. Uh, I'm gonna go over a couple of different things here. Uh, there's a little baby pre-test. I'll go over SDLC overview. We may or may not take a tiny break. Um, depending on how much I need water. We'll go over a little bit of project management SDLC glossary. Again, there's no project management on your exam specifically, except for as it relates to systems analysis. And then I have a set of review questions for you at the end. If you've already done these review questions, the same ones that are in the older videos, so I have not updated them in quite a while. If you want them updated, maybe that can be the next coffee goal after we pay the moderators.
The moderator.
The moderator. Singular one right now. Um, so pre-test questions are what does SDLC stand for? And just answer these to yourself for me. We don't need to type it into chat or anything. Gives more people a chance to try to answer it. Um, name at least three standard SDLC deliverables. How are SDLC and project management related? Give examples for functional, technical, operational and transitional requirements. And describe at least two SDLC methodologies. If you don't know the answers to some of those, hopefully by the end of this review session, you will know the answers to all of them. So we'll answer the first one right now and say that SDLC stands for system development lifecycle or software development lifecycle sometimes. Again, that's something that is a bit uh changeable depending on who your source is, but there will not be a question on the exam that says something like, oh, what does SDLC stand for? And then has choices A, B, C, D, where one is system and the other is software, because both are accepted names for this process. New York State prefers the system development lifecycle uh name in the project management handbook because it doesn't necessarily have to be software. That is the solution to something. So system development lifecycle is what we're going with here. And again, this is following the New York State Project Management Guidebook. So we have six phases. And that's going to be, I'm gonna just lift list them off here quickly and we'll go through kind of all of them a little bit. System initiation, system requirements analysis, system design, system construction, system acceptance and system implementation would be your six phases. Let's talk more about each one in a little bit more detail. So first of all, phase one, system initiation. And the way that I'm doing this presentation, we have uh deliverables kind of guiding our discussion for each section. So the deliverables that come out of our system initiation are a validated solution and a system schedule. So when you're trying to initiate a system and kind of start your whole process, you want to make sure, okay, is this definitely a software thing? That we're going to be solving before we go on and purchase some software and try to implement it or create some software. Um, and we want to make sure that we understand what the problem is that we're supposed to be solving and how much time we have to do it. So the deliverables out of the initiation phase would just be a solution and a system schedule. It doesn't mean that the final solution might not change a little bit by the time we get to the end. But when we start off, we have the validated solution, the system schedule. For phase two, we're going to do requirements analysis. So now we kind of know where we're going. We're going to start talking to the business users, to the subject matter experts and get some business requirements. We're going to get a process model. So how does information flow through the system? What are the processes that are going on? A logical data model, which would just be, you know, what are the elements of data that we have? Is it, is it maybe employee data? So I have employee data and addresses and I have what jobs they've done. Um, that would be all the logical data. It's different than the actual technical specification for the data model, which would say something like the job information is held in the PeopleSoft PS job table, which has these columns specifically. So these would be more business focused and more real word focused, so less, less technical and jargon-y maybe. And we would have functional specifications, which again are just what are the functions things need to perform. For phase three, system design, this is where we start to work on our technical. So we've now talked to the business users and we know what they want. So now we're going to start making a technical architecture and standards and a database. Probably almost every software needs a database. Um, prototypes and technical specifications based on that. So this would be where we're saying, okay, job information is going to be held in this table. And it's going to be updated by these three processes or these three jobs that are running on the database. And here's how users will go in on this specific form. And all of these technical specifications would get set up in this phase where we're designing what's going on. In the construction phase, that's when we're actually starting to build things. Uh, system construction deliverables would include refined standards and tests as you're building, right? So as we're building things, standards might need to be updated. Maybe we start building and we realize, oh, we thought we were gonna do it this way, but we need to actually do it something slightly different. We have user and training materials and documentation that get created as part of the whole construction phase as well. So once everything is built, we would be able to go on to systems acceptance. And at the end of this, we would have some sort of a understanding with our end user that the system is ready to go. So they would do some dat- data validation testing. They would do some acceptance testing and probably refine the training materials and documentation as they go, right? So they might look at some of the documentation and say, well, this doesn't make any sense. Is this really how it works? And it might get um further explained or further defined there. And then for implementation, um, I've done this one a little bit differently in these slides. The implementation is actually, I've given you a screenshot from the handbook that I was talking about, that New York State Project Management Guidebook. So in this section, when we're doing system implementation, they actually give you a nice little checklist about measurements of success. So this is when you're taking the system that you have built, that the user has now said they like, that they accept it. And you're pushing it out to the users to say, okay, it's yours now. Have fun. Um, so there's a couple of checkboxes for preparing for system implementation. Like has everyone verified that every consumer has the right level of system access and security? And then deploying the system and then transitioning it to maintenance mode, right? Where the performing organization can take care of any remaining defects and the system in general. There's a great graphic in the Project Management Guidebook that kind of summarizes everything altogether. And I know it's gonna be too tiny to read on your screen. But again, it's linked in the uh in on the NYS ITS site and it's just just out of that New York State Project Management Guidebook where it lines up all the different phases, all six phases across. And it kind of tells you your deliverables and tells you what activities are going on in each phase. And it does include the uh important phase at the end of having a party. You can see the little balloons on the screen. They're probably super tiny on your screen, but um celebrating that the project is complete is also part of what we want to do at the end of a big uh software project or a system development project. The next thing that I wanted to go over is how all those phases kind of fit into project management because monitoring and controlling what's going on in the project is something that's important. And it's important not just from the project management side. It's also important from the systems analysis side. Um, so I'm just going to quickly go over kind of how these things interact. So project management includes a couple of things beyond the actual system build, the system development lifecycle part. And that in, that's the project origination, which is where you find a project sponsor that wants something done and you start doing some of that initial project creation work and then project closeout at the very end. Right? Where you do your lessons learned, you celebrate your wins and uh make sure that all the project materials are closed out properly. So we have those two extra bits at the end, but then some of the rest of the project management steps fit in very nicely with our system steps. So project initiation matches with system initiation. Project planning happens while you're doing the systems analysis and system design. You go kind of go back and forth and plan. And then the execution and control where it's all about monitoring and adjusting the schedule if we need to and figuring out um what the dependencies are and who needs what when. All of that's happening during system construction, system acceptance, system implementation. Okay. Uh, next up, I've got a couple of SDLC methodologies for you. And this is just a couple and I think I mentioned before, it's not going to be um on your exam. I wouldn't expect questions about very specific methodologies or questions about um exactly, you know, in scrum methodology, what is the role of a scrum master? Uh, as far as XYZ, you, it wouldn't be something that very specific. It might be something like um in agile development, what's something that differentiates agile development from waterfall development? So I would expect more generalized questions there. The list of things that we just talked about, if they just go in that order from phase one all the way through to phase six, uh that would be kind of a waterfall methodology, right? That's why uh I like this slide design here. Where it shows me how things fall from one layer to the next. Reminds me that it's a waterfall. That's what it's called. Um, so we fall from requirements down to design, down to implementation, verification, maintenance, that's just slightly different names than um the New York State Project Management Guidebook uses. But waterfall is falling down, 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 and we generally don't go back and redo things that often. We're trying to just get all the requirements at the beginning and just go, go, go until we're done. Fountain is a bit like waterfall, but its intention is, once we get down to the bottom, we're going to do another waterfall, starting at the beginning and going up. And as you keep making that a faster and faster loop, what we end up with is more agile methodologies. So a lot of agile methodologies kind of smoosh those phases into very small uh very, very small time periods. So scrum might even be as small as a week to say, here's what we're doing this week. We'll get some requirements. We'll get some uh design done. We'll, you know, and they they smoosh it all together to do very small baby projects. Um, there is a methodology called V. I haven't really ever seen that much about it. But it is basically just taking a waterfall and kind of uh smashing it sideways. It's just uh the, it's very similar. You can see it's all the same uh steps. We define things, we build things, we test things and then we go back. So just to go over some of these more of these SDLC methodologies, this tiny little chart would be as much as I would expect to see on an exam about any one of these specific methodologies. So agile in general is kind of real-time communication. All of these, many of these would be considered types of agile development. Um, but there's all sorts of different types. So XP or extreme programming. One of its highlights is that they believe in uh pairs programming. So people sit in a cubicle together or look at the same code together as it's being developed. Um, JAD, joint application design, I mentioned before, is users participating in the solution design process, the software design process. So they actually stay in the discussions a lot longer than they would with normal waterfall. Like they might be involved even when like names are being chosen for technical objects. Like they might be involved even when like names are being chosen for technical objects. Um, and how the tables relate to each other and things like that. LD is adding value to the customer. I believe that's lean development. RAD, Rapid Application Development, Rapid Application Deployment is about getting a prototype out as quickly as possible. And then Scrum is kind of probably the most familiar, most classic of the new agile wave of things where people believe in daily standup meetings and a product backlog of all the enhancements and defects that want to be done. And then choosing what backlog fits into your little baby sprints. So that is SDLC methodologies. And there's, there's four million more. But again, you're not going to be asked about details of a specific methodology when they've got all of systems analysis to cover in fifteen questions. So being familiar with some methodologies is fine, but feeling like you have to know all of them is probably overkill. It's probably better to spend some more of your time understanding different types of requirements and what like functional versus technical requirement would mean. So as an example, uh, for a functional requirement, we might say something like that. That's a function that the site has to have. Sorry, that that's the software has to have or the site has to have. So a functional requirement might be something like users have to be able to log in. And that might be the entire functional requirement. No further information about how they log in, when they log in, where they log in, might not be, none of that might be there, but could be users have to be able to log into the site to access certain functions. So that would be the functional version of the requirement. And then we can have a technical version of the requirement. That might say something like the user login screen, uh, is going to use Windows Active Directory. Or the user login screen is going to use some other form of authentication, specific authentication protocol. Those might be technical requirements. We have operational requirements, which might be things like how often the system needs to be up or how quickly it needs to operate. So we might have an operational requirement that once the user clicks the login button, login, uh, they should be redirected to the main page within five hundred milliseconds. Or we might have another operational requirement that says something like the login service must be available to users at least twenty-three hours every day. So these might be different operational requirements that you could have. Can also have transitional requirements about how things are getting transitioned from, uh, the project mode to actual like everyday use. And it might be something like, uh, one of the requirements would be that we can do testing on a test active directory. And then we're going to need to transition it onto the live active directory at a certain date and time. So I have, again, this is from our Project Management Guidebook, this graphic. It has just a reminder about the six steps of the system development lifecycle. But then there are the lists of functional, technical, operational, and transitional requirements. So functional impacts how the business runs, technical impacts system infrastructure, operational impacts operations and support, and transitional impacts the implementation. There's some more examples for you there and the bullets of different types of requirements you might have. Let's talk about QA or quality assurance for a little bit here. So SQA, Software Quality Assurance, or QA, or, um, test, or what else might they call it? Unit testing or validation, all sorts of words for this. You might also have software quality standards and processes and controls that go on. Some of the ideas around, uh, QA protocols or testing software could be subject on this test. So knowing the difference, for example, between unit testing and integration testing might be, uh, useful. And regression testing, I don't have a slide for this, I maybe should make one, but unit testing is testing that one specific thing in your program works correctly. Integration testing would be, once you put your code with the other code, does it still work the way that you're supposed to? It's supposed to work. Um, and regression testing would be specifically testing to make sure you didn't break anything that used to be working. So, uh, whatever quality standards are in your particular office, please remember that these questions are not for specifically your office. That everybody in New York State that is taking this exam gets the same questions. So just keep that in mind when you're trying to answer some of these and that should help you to get the correct answer that's going to be right for most of the people, most of the time. And not necessarily just in your area. You have a number of different project roles that you might need to know as you go through a software lifecycle, system lifecycle. So I'm just going to pop in the list of all of these different roles as we go through and speak to very briefly what these people's jobs might be as part of the lifecycle, as part of systems analysis. Because, uh, if you see a name of a person or a type of role on your exam, you don't want to have absolutely zero idea what that person's supposed to be doing. So a facilitator is somebody who helps run meetings and helps to, uh, facilitate conversations between different groups. Oftentimes, they might also help to, uh, create meetings where different groups are getting together. There's business analysts who are mainly tasked with gathering requirements and analyzing business processes to make sure that they can be documented properly. Database administrators are often responsible for the, uh, the non-programming parts of database work. So that is making sure there's enough storage, making sure the backups are working correctly, making sure that, uh, people aren't writing queries that are taking down the database because they're too inefficient. So that's the database administrator role in general. Data and process modelers take the information from the business analyst generally and will help to document that in database diagrams like ERDs, which is an entity relationship diagram. I think I have a picture of one a bit later in this. And they might also document processes doing flow charts and things like that. Sometimes the business analyst and the process and data process modeler are the same person. A technical lead or architect would be a person who's responsible for the general technical direction of a project. They would be kind of the be all end all for technical decisions. Application developers are most of, most of the programmers in general, right, would fall under application developers. A lot of people taking this exam probably would consider themselves application developers. They're responsible for coding solutions, but they might also be doing, um, non-standard applications. So maybe they're working on PeopleSoft, maybe they're working on, uh, Cold Fusion, some sort of a web app. There's all sorts of different types of application developers out there. But they would be responsible for actually making the technical specifications sometimes and making the actual work product. SQA, again, that's the Software Quality Assurance Analysts, uh, specifically targeting testing. If you're lucky enough to have separate testers in your area. And we have technical services. They can help us with installing software, um, maintaining servers, things like that. And then information security offices. Generally, uh, make sure that we're not building things that have giant holes in them for people to hack. They make sure that the software rebuild is safe and not going to cause unexpected security issues. And then technical support would be if you break your computer, if something goes wrong, helping you to get back and up and running. So now that we are done with kind of a general overview here, we're going to take a quick little review. And I am going to take a brief break. While I leave up this break review for you to think about. And if you have any questions remaining about the things in this break review, um, please post them in the chat or again, you can email me later about them and we will get that answered. So we'll do like five minutes and then I'll be right back. Hello, I'm back. The lag is still going to be present through this whole stream, so I see it say done in one place and then it takes a little while for me to come around and be here in the other. Let me restart our captioning. Welcome back, everybody. I hope you had a nice little break. I apparently left my water bottle in the other room. And one of my lovely friends will get it for me. But we will go on from here. So what does SDLC stand for? Hopefully, uh, you guys all got that it's system development or software development lifecycle. How are SDLC and project man, oh, sorry, name at least three standard SDLC deliverables? Any of the three from the chart that we went over earlier? I will flip back to it for just a second here. Right there. Uh, so that's the validated solution, the system requirements documents, business requirements, process models, uh, logical data models, technical specs, functional specs. Oh, this is very tiny. System code, prototypes, test results, acceptance test results, validation results, documentation, user manuals, training, any of that sort of thing would be all valid answers. So let's go back to where we were. How are SDLC and project management related? The phases line up pretty nicely. Project management is kind of around the whole SDLC process. And then we had the different types of requirements, functional, technical, operational, and transitional. And if we had to do another type of example, maybe it would be that a user needs to be able to change their password. And that would be the functional requirement. And the technical requirement might be something like, uh, that the password changes, are stored encrypted using some sort of encryption. And that they have an opportunity to email the passwords using some sort of specific email SMTP servers. Whatever the technical implementation requirements for that would be, would be technical type things. Operational things would be that the password reset function needs to be available whenever the site is open, whenever the site is working. And that password reset emails need to be sent within two seconds of when the user hits the button. And then transitional would be something like, when we go live with the system, we need to make sure we change it from sending emails with the word test at the front to regular emails without the word test. And then at least two SDLC methodologies, we would, I would probably just go with like waterfall and agile in general waterfall being the more traditional, you try to get all of your project requirements at once and then go from requirements to design and from design to implementation, building, uh, to design and from design to implementation, building, uh, implementation, construction, whatever, um, to, you know, I would, I would probably talk about waterfall a little bit and I might talk about uh, agile or Scrum. Cause those are ones that I personally have experience with. The latter half of this review is going to go over a bunch of different like acronyms and concepts. It's just kind of a glossary of alphabet soup. Um, and then we'll go over some practice questions. And again, you might have different glossary. You might have slightly different definitions for certain things. It's all okay. Anything that's within the realm of accurate systems analysis would be acceptable answers in general for civil service test purposes because they aren't telling you specifically study this one book or do this one thing. Um, so systems analysis in general is fine. So BCP slash DR. Um, I don't expect that you would know, need to know these acronyms like right off the top of your head, but you should know the concepts which are business continuity planning and disaster recovery. So we have a little lifecycle, uh, which is very similar to the normal software development lifecycle about how to do this business continuity planning. So that's just basically like if something catastrophic happens, how do we keep doing the work of the business? BPR. A little bit less common of a word. Um, that would be business process redesign or re-engineering. So sometimes in order to solve a problem, the answer is not to make new software, but it's to change how the business is doing its work. So that would be instead of maybe requiring a form, we're going to start accepting it online as a web form and then people don't have to retype it. CMM is a commoner framework that people use to describe how mature different, uh, software solutions are, different capabilities are. So this is a abbreviation for a capability maturity model. You might see, uh, maturity models in general in software engineering and systems analysis as kind of measures of how sophisticated your system has become and how basically how mature it is. So like a prototype would be a very low maturity level and a legacy system that's been around for twenty years might be very mature and have all sorts of different functions and contingencies taken care of that the prototype would not. CASE is an acronym for computer aided software engineering. So this is pretty common nowadays where you have some sort of an IDE, which will probably be later on in our alphabet soup here. Um, and some sort of an integrated development environment where the computer can kind of help you with your software engineering. Um, CSSQ is more of a project management term, but it's a way to remember the constraints on a project. So especially if you're going to be doing um, higher grade level exams later and you have to do some of this project management work, you should know that cost, scope, schedule and quality are generally the constraints on a project. So if something is going to take a lot of time, has a big scope and they need high quality, they probably need a high cost too. So you, they're all kind of related to each other. A lot of times the project management triangle was only sc- cost, scope and schedule. But quality has been added to it. Uh, because that does affect what we can deliver. Cause I can give it to you quickly, cheaply and, and with what you want, but it's probably going to be kind of garbage. So if I want high quality, then I need to account for that. Uh, CSF is, um, I mean, it's a medical term too. It's cerebrospinal fluid, but we're not thinking about that. We're doing, um, the computer version, which is critical success factors. So these would be things that are absolutely required for success. Uh, CRUD is create, read, update, delete. It is a standard way of recording how different processes affect data entities. And that would be things like, uh, when I am logging in, I need to create a login entry. I need to read the encrypted password to make sure that it's the right one. I need to update the last login time. Things like that. So CRUD lets me kind of very briefly summarize how tables usually in a database tables are affected by different processes. And this is one I mentioned before, ERD. That is an entity relationship diagram. So this would be, uh, one type of entity relationship diagram. This would be more of a functional diagram that I'm showing right now. Where it says a faculty reports to a department. A course is taught by faculty, a department offers courses. So all of these are just normal words and normal, um, little lines between them. We can also have more technical entity relationship diagrams that might look something more like this where you have not only the the, uh, different entities as their table names with, you know, their specific data types. We also have in this one, an example of something called crow's foot notation where it tells you the one to many-ness of the relationships between these tables. So this one would be a, another type of an entity relationship diagram you might see. Uh, GUI or GUI, I guess. I don't think I've ever heard anybody say GUI. It's always GUI. Um, so GUI is the graphical user interface. And that is, you know, how we interact with computers most of the time now unless you're doing like server administration and you're kicking around in in, uh, some of the old school command lines. But mostly graphical user interfaces are how we interact with computers. We've gone over JAD a couple of times. That was joint application design. Again, the users being part of the uh, software design process much later than they normally would be and helping to actually kind of put the software together. Uh, this one's LAN slash WAN is more of a networking term, which if you've watched some of my old videos, you might know is my least favorite part of the exam, anything about networking. I'm so glad that they aren't on the exam anymore. Um, but LAN and WAN are local area network, wide area network, they're networking terms. Uh, there's also newer WLAN wireless local area network. I say newer, like it's not twenty years old, but it's newer than the other ones. Um, MT slash CS are the different types of, uh, ways that you can set up your web stack generally or your application stack. Uh, multi-tier client server is a pretty standard way of setting up an application stack where you have a presentation layer, presentation tier, a logic tier and a data tier. So that's one way to set up a multi-tier client server setup. Many ways to do it. But it's good to kind of understand the different layers of things. Um, RAD is one of those types of agile programming we talked about before. This one was the rapid application deployment. Uh, SEI I found on a lot of paperwork and documentation, if you happen to see it, it's the Software Engineering Institute. That's someone's that came up with that capability maturity model I talked about earlier. Uh, TQM is an older term. Kind of goes with like the lean, uh, six sigma type stuff. It's total quality management. It's focusing on as few defects as possible. UML would be for unified modeling language, which is where we document a lot of our business processes in. Um, and a lot of BAs use a lot of UML for their work. WBS would be a work breakdown structure. And that's my kind of eclectic vocabulary about, uh, systems analysis. Again, if you get one of those older edition textbooks, I, I like the older editions because they're cheaper. I mean, you can obviously spend a lot of money and get a new edition if you'd like, but I don't think they're going to really give you that much more for this topic than an older edition would, um. And obviously there are hundreds of other terms that I didn't go over. This was just a smattering of different terms to kind of get you started. And I also want to say thank you to everybody who was able to send in a tip. I see that we're at a hundred percent of our goal. Anything extra you guys want to tip is going to help me to get better set up here to do these live streams and compensate me for some of the time that we do. So thank you all. If you were able to send a tip over, I appreciate it.
What does RAD stand for?
Rapid Application Deployment or Rapid Application Design. Uh, it's all about getting a prototype out the door as quickly as possible so that people can see and play with the prototype and then come back and, um, give you feedback about it and you just keep refining it off the prototype. It's all about giving somebody something to play with to get started. Deployment Development, oh, I see it. Deployment Development, same thing. Deployment Development. I, I interchange them. I've seen it both ways actually. Thanks for the question, Dan. All right. Are we ready for some practice, uh, review here? Ready or not, I'm going to do it anyway. Review questions. And like we talked about at the very beginning, because we're earlier in the study process right now. Maybe you've been studying for a while, but we're still a little ways out. I'm going to go over one question at a time and then the answer, which is how I would recommend that you study at this point as well. So out of the four choices on your screen, uh, which one of these four choices is the process of translating a task into a series of commands that a computer will use to perform that task? Please don't post it in chat or anything. Um, we want people to have a chance to answer it on their own. But your options are A, project design, B, installation, C, systems analysis, D, programming. I'll give you a little bit of time to choose an answer and then reveal that the correct answer is D, programming. Hopefully I started you off with a little bit of an easier question. There. Alright, question two. Who are the people who spend most of their time in the beginning stages of SDLC? Talking with end users, gathering information, documenting systems and proposing solutions. Are they A, business analysts? B, project managers? C, network engineers? Or D, database administrators? Correct answer is letter A, business analysts. Business analysts are the ones who do all that work. And we love them for it, if we have any. I haven't been so lucky to have a business analyst for quite a while. Question three. Which one of these things do you think determines whether a project should go forward or not? A, a feasibility assessment? B, an opportunity identification? C, system evaluation? Or D, program specification? The correct answer is A, the feasibility assessment. And I see a couple of questions in chat. So, um, one of the questions says, we should expect fifteen questions on this SDLC section of the test. Yes, I would expect approximately fifteen questions on the SDLC section. That's pretty standard for civil service tests that there are about fifteen questions per section. Um, and then I see another question about, will they ask us for definitions of these terms? In my experience, I don't think that definitions of terms is in the, um, it's not really in the exam announcement. So I wouldn't expect like, oh, the term whatever most closely means whatever, unless it's something that's more related to the entire subject of systems analysis. Like it might say something like the feasibility assessment is used for which of the following purposes? And then it might give you four choices that would give you, um, a question about your understanding of the feasibility assessment. So it wouldn't be like a straightforward definition. It would be more, um, more based on the function of that thing or why that thing exists or why we use it. It wouldn't necessarily just be a straightforward definition. Does that make sense? That, that would be my expectation anyway. And these are all, I think I mentioned it, they are all bubble choices. There's no free answer. I can't even imagine somebody having to sit there and grade open-ended thousands of them. There are so many people in the IT titles. Oh, that would be that would be some special kind of torture for someone. But they're all bubble choices. They're all ABCDs. Alright, question four. This one is a little bit, uh, project management-y. But these are again phrases or words that you should be familiar with as you go through this section. So a blank is used to schedule the time it will take to complete computer tasks or program development. A, A, WBS? B, Gantt chart? C, data flow diagram? D, data dictionary? Captioner really did not like me reading off those answer choices.
Did they ask for any definitions on the test?
And the best answer to this one is actually letter B, the Gantt chart because the work breakdown structure doesn't actually have, um, the, the time scheduled. The work breakdown structure is really just the list of tasks that need to be done. The Gantt chart is where you mix that with the, the time. So that one's a little bit trickier. Cause you have to look at every word in the question sometimes. So question five, within a data flow diagram, so we're talking about how data flows through a system. The transformations that occur within the lowest level are described by A, development methodologies? B, structure charts? C, selection constructs? Or D, process specifications? This is a good time for me to bring up another study tip for you, which is that there are no points deducted for wrong answers on this exam. Therefore, if you don't know the answer, you should always, always, always guess. And when you guess, you can just choose your favorite letter. There is no rhyme or reason to which letter is better to There is no rhyme or reason to which letter is better to choose than any other one. But, please do not leave questions blank on the actual exam because you might just randomly get some extra points. Another thing about the exam is that you do not need to get all of the questions right to actually get a hundred on the exam. The exams are curved, they are rounded as well. They only score in five-point increments. Um, so, don't stress out if you really don't know one question. That might not be uh, that detrimental. I've definitely gotten questions wrong and gotten a hundred on the exam before. It is definitely something that happens. So, the correct answer to this one about the data flow diagrams is letter D, The Process Specification. So, if you look at the options, if you can even eliminate one of them, it's going to give you a better chance at guessing the correct answer too. So, we know it's not A, Development Methodologies, because that has nothing to do with this. So, we would cross off letter A, and then we'd have a thirty-three and a third percent chance, even if we just guessed out of the rest of them, so. D, Process Specifications. Alright, next one, uh, question six. Which of the following is a tool used by database designers to document a conceptual data model? Is it A, The Entity Relationship Diagram? B, A Partition Statement? C, A Matrix Diagram? Or D, A Data Flow Diagram? Alright, the correct answer is letter A, The Entity Relationship Diagram. Question seven, technical writers generally provide the blank for the new system? A, Programs? B, Network? C, Analysis? Or D, Documentation?
Are points allotted, or do we get points for longevity is the question?
Yes, I just uh, posted in the chat. Sorry, there's a question in the chat about whether you get points for longevity on the test, probably because I was talking about how points and scoring work. Um, and yes, you do for this exam, based on your exam announcement. Um, I think it was one point for every five years. I'm double checking that right now. And then I will give the answer to question seven. Multitasking, it's a thing. So, technical writers generally provide the D, Documentation for the system? And hopefully, that was pretty easy. I think that was a pretty easy question there. There's always a mix of easy and hard questions, um, and there's no rhyme or reason about what order they're in, so. If you, especially if you're stuck on a question, be sure to go all the way to the end of the section to make sure you get to all the questions. Credit for seniority is one credit for every five-year period or fraction thereof, excluding the first year of service. That's the official answer from your exam announcement. I will post it into the chat. Okay, if you have questions about that, contact Civil Service, please. Question eight. In a system development process, users are made active members of development project teams. This is an example of A, RAD? B, JAD? C, Waterfall? D, Documentation? The captions are cracking me up. I'm trying to be more accessible, but these captions are not always great. It is doing its best. Uh, the correct answer is letter B, JAD. I'm so sorry if you're relying on the captions and they're not up to standard. I'm trying, I swear. Question nine. Which stage in the system lifecycle would you produce the logical and physical specifications for the project? Would it be A, Initiation? B, Design? C, Construction? Or D, Acceptance? Uh, correct answer is that these happen in the design phase. Question ten, our last practice question for the day. Uh, in most organizations, the entire system building effort is driven by A, Availability of Packaged Applications? B, Existing Hardware? C, User Training Requirements? Or D, User Information Requirements? Alright, our answer to this one is actually letter D, The User's Information Requirements. Um, you have to remember that this is not necessarily your specific workplace. I know a lot of people like to choose answers that match their workplace. Um, but, this is saying in most organizations, and it's kind of expecting uh, sunshine rainbow happy land, where, oh sure, captions get that part right. It's expecting this sunshiny land where things happen the way they're supposed to, more than they maybe actually do. You know, the things that we, we want to happen, so. Ideally, in most organizations, systems would be driven by what the users actually need as far as their information. Which is letter D here. Okay, um, and I think that pretty much is it for this topic. Uh, the live streams we have scheduled for the next two that we have scheduled is not next week. Next week, I have another commitment. But it's the week after, and then the week after that. And I plan to go over more uh, more topics for you guys. Let me just-
The nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
I am, yes, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, same time. We're going to start at about as close to two as I can. And we're going to go until maybe close to four, maybe end a little bit early depending on you know, how things flow. I don't necessarily need to just stay around here until four o'clock, just talking about nothing. Um, so, on the nineteenth, I'll be talking about preparing written material first. And that usually takes about a little under an hour to do that whole section. And then we'll talk about flow charts, which also takes a, a good amount of time. So, we'll probably go for the full time next time on the nineteenth. And then on the twenty-sixth, that's really going to be more um, interactive a little bit, and we're going to talk about the Understanding and Interpreting a Manual topic, which I know people have been asking me for resources for, for quite a while. I'm going to put some things together for that. Um, so, we'll talk about Understanding and Interpreting a Manual, and we'll do a wrap-up of all the topics briefly. Um, and then any last-minute questions you guys have for the week before your test. So, again, thank you for any tips. Thank you for uh, hanging out with me. It was nice to see some good numbers on our stream. Um,
So, the book they're asking about?
Yep, I am coming back to the chat right now, again with my twenty-second delay. Hopefully, the delay will be less in future streams too. I forgot to click the low latency button when I started this one, but again, first stream, we're learning. I hope that it wasn't too uh, wasn't too um, awful for you, as I was learning how to do some of this. Uh, the book that I was using again is called uh, Systems Analysis and Design Methods by Witten and Bentley. But honestly, looking up any type of Systems Analysis and Design Book would be perfectly acceptable. Here is the book again, um, and Moderator Sarah very kindly popped that in the chat for you as well. The question about which to focus on at this point, the Systems Analysis and Design Methods or the ITS Project Management? For the ITS Project Management is, at the end is um, it's only that last section. Section three is about SDLC, so. They should be pretty equivalent, just a general uh, textbook about Systems Analysis. And section three of that New York State Project Management Guidebook are both about SDLC Systems Analysis stuff. You can kind of do one or the other. Um, I see another question about how scores are calculated or a minimum mark to clear the exam. Uh, that is something that I will write down to go over. Sorry, uh, Monica, I will go over that the week before the exam if you'd like, um, or after the exam. The recommendation for books for flow chart, see if somebody can get you the CSEA Flow Chart Book. Um, and I'll go over some practice on those next time. Uh, Dan said something about the format for the workshops. Oh yeah, I like, I like this format too, Dan. I know it, it started because of COVID that I set this all up to be able to do this, but it is nice to be able to uh, nice to be able to kind of help more people at once and to have it recorded for later very easily. Um, the one PM on the upcoming streams is incorrect. Yes, I must have misclicked when I set them up. I will change that to two. Um, Nicole, you obtained the recorded version of this session by using that same link. It'll be on the Toner Tutoring YouTube page. There's a playlist, and it'll be right in that playlist that you'll be able to watch it.
So, is this the flow chart booklet?
Um, yeah, it's, it's one of the CSEA booklets, uh, but the flow chart, it's also called like scheduling or something like that. So, see if you can find someone to help you get a copy of that booklet. Um, so, ha, that's how we record this. The day of, do they give us all the questions of the four topics at the same time and you start with the topic you want? Yes, all the topics are given at once. The exam booklet is, is not like the SATs or anything where they're like, okay, the section starts now and ends now. You have the whole exam time to do whatever topic in whatever order you want to do it. And I think that's all the questions for now. If you still have questions, I am not going to run away right this second. Uh, but, I will switch off this slide view here to me talking to you view. Um, and yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to pop them in chat. And I will work on them. I, I'm gonna work on the scoring and everything in just a minute. I might do more um, more about scoring and eligible lists and things like that in our wrap-up session for people that want it. Books for flow chart for complex flow charts. The best thing I would say for complex flow chart is that flow charts are often very logic-based. So, if you happen to be into doing logic puzzles or logic books, those might help you with some of your flow chart work. And I do see another question about how long will the exam take? Oh, it, um, the exam, I, I don't have that information. That's something you have to ask Civil Service. I tried calling them the other day to get it. Uh, but, nobody answered. I think they're understaffed, so. You can apparently get some of the CSEA books at the library. That's nice. I, uh, Gerard and Umu, I don't know, uh, I don't know how much time you get. Somebody asked, "Is there any other way to help with the course?" Uh, if you guys want to write up some flow chart examples, people would love to have them. Uh, I will be happy to distribute them. I have heard from a couple people who are looking for tutors, if you know anybody that wants to tutor. I'm not doing one-on-one tutoring this time, but if you know anybody who wants to, or you want to, uh, contact me and I can put you in touch with some people looking for tutors. Um, I see another question about how long the exam takes. Again, don't know. Uh, when you do the review of the test, you have to give them your questions at the end of the test, but you don't get the question back, so how does it work? When you go to do review the week after the test, if they are giving review, they might not, they do give you the questions themselves and the answer sheet, so. They do um, they do give you the exam back. Uh, well, not your exam, but they give you an exam booklet back. I see a question about the post-test questionnaire of skills. That usually doesn't come out until closer to the uh, release of scores, so that's probably going to be a couple months before that comes out. And they reopen that every so often for you to update your skills. They're supposed to reopen it like, at least twice a year, or once every quarter or something. But uh, sometimes they don't open it, and sometimes they do. The post-test questionnaire, it's called the Selective Certification Questionnaires. Um, those come out and reopen pretty frequently. Um, if you don't do well on the exam, how often are they given? It is years between exams, that is correct. Um, the exams have been given, to my recollection, in twenty-ten, twenty-fourteen, twenty-seventeen, and they were supposed to be given in twenty-twenty. Obviously, that one got delayed um, to now, so it, they're trying to get them faster. That's part of why they don't have the networking and database questions anymore, and why they've gone to Selective Cert. I think that I've heard Civil Service was trying to aim to do them every two years, but it's definitely going to be at least more than a year. Um, so, somebody did post that you can get some of those CSEA booklets at the library. And I see somebody else posting that um, they're willing to share the copy they have at work. So, just keep in mind that these are copyrighted things, so just be careful where you're posting about sharing things. Um, and I'm going to wait a few more minutes for other questions. When I do the um, I think I might cut some of this stuff out when I, when I do the fine, the final uh, edit of this video, when I post it for review, just because it's a little rambly, and I'm not sure anybody wants to watch this part if you're not here. Um, can you sign up for review if offered, even though we may not have questions just to see the correct answers? Yes, you can. You can sign up with review if you want, uh, because you don't know, you don't know ahead of time whether you're going to have the questions or not, uh, about what the answer choices are. The chat is included in the live stream. I did, um, I believe I did turn that thing on. So, the chat will be included, and I will, uh, once it's on demand, and I will try to grab all those links and pop them in the description as well. Um, for this stream, after the, after the um, fact. I see a question about, if you pass the test, when the next question is given, do you need to take it again? Yes, you do. Even if you got a hundred, if you're still on the list and haven't been promoted yet, you need to take the test again, because once the new list is established, the old list dies. Um, and you will no longer be on the list if you do not take the exam when it comes out again. And to everyone who said thank you, you are quite welcome. I'm glad people took the time to come here and do this live with me. Well, livish, twenty-second delay. Um, it's much nicer to talk to people instead of to an empty screen. It's much nicer to talk to people instead of to an empty screen. Um, I see a bunch of people asking about the minimum passing score. There is a minimum passing score. You need, uh, at least a seventy to be listed on the eligible list. So if you don't have a seventy to be listed on the eligible list, then you will not be on the eligible list. So. Minimum score to be included. May has a question about for database title exam. It looked like there were only one or two questions about database questions for last exam, but there were more on programming exams, why? Uh, last exam in twenty-seventeen, as I recall, had the same questions for the programming and database parenthetics, so. I don't quite know what you're referring to, but there may be some generalized database questions just as part of systems analysis in this exam as well. There's a question about whether they keep your best score. I don't know how they would do that because once a new test comes out, the old scores are dead. Oh, no, it's seventy overall. It's not seventy in each topic. It's a seventy overall. That's what, i- if that's the question about keeping your best store, score, it's it's the overall score. You do get to see your single topic scores when you go on the civil service site later. They'll tell you, okay, there were this many topics and you got this many out of that many correct. But even with a seventy, you can actually be appointed because of your selective certifications. If you are an expert in something that is more uncommon, you can still get up on that, uh, the top of the list, depending on who else knows that thing, so. Very interesting system that they worked up. So I will definitely be adding to, there's a lot of questions about how the civil service works, it looked like. So I will be adding to the, um, I'll be adding to the agenda for the last week before the test, a little bit, a, a baby intro to how the eligible lists work and how civil service works. Uh, seventy percent, not seventy raw points. It's a seventy percent. And again, even though it's sixty questions, and what's seven times six is fifty-six? Eight times six, oh yeah, okay, I don't know why I can't math right now. Yes, thank you. Moderator Sarah helping me out here. It's okay. Six times seven is forty-two, so you would need forty-two questions correct. Glad that's recorded for posterity. My brain turns to mush after a little while.
This is currently what I'm teaching with kids in school, so it's there.
It's forty-two approximately because again, it's curved, it's rounded, some questions get thrown out. It's, yeah, so somewhere around forty maybe, I don't know, but like forty-two would be seventy percent, so. They're never gonna give you less points than you got. But you might get a couple bonus points due to questions getting thrown out or due to rounding.
And it doesn't hurt to get higher than seventy percent.
Oh no, the higher you are on the list, the more likely you are to be reachable. If you guys have heard of reachable, that is the magic word as to whether you can actually be promoted. Um, and again, I'll go over all that stuff later. Next time, we have a pretty full agenda with the, um, preparing written material and the flow charts, so it'll probably be the week after that, right before the exam. We'll be a little more chill because we don't wanna cram at the last minute. Can please provide a PDF for today's topic? It's already up on the NICE IT site, uh. If you search for system development and it's been posted here in chat a couple times, I'll post it again. Um, and you can get it from, hopefully I will remember to put it in the description as well at the end here. I'm gonna start making a list of all the links that need to go in the description. But again, I'm hanging out here in case people have questions and if you wanna go, obviously, have fun, otherwise. This'll be the boring part that gets cut out before I post it for everybody. So slides and NICE IT's post, P M guidebook, um.
The copy link.
Thank you.
So Mahir asks if he does well on this and he doesn't get promoted, he's back to square one, just the next test. He just wants to make sure.
Yep.
So Mahir, you will be back at square one.
Unfortunate but true. The, the link you sent for the book, Sarah, was a thrift books link? Okay. So if thrift books runs out of copies of that book, though, the price might start going up, so you can look for other books, guys.
Yeah, it's tiny Euro, URL it because it only lets me put two hundred characters in the chat.
Thank you for tiny URLing it.
Yeah, no problem.
Let's see if I can figure out how to edit a description while something's going on. I think I edited the description, okay.
You sure did.
Proud of myself.
This would be a helpful setup for like the New York State regions. Thinking as a high school teacher.
Alright guys, I think I'm gonna shut off the stream, so if you have further questions, you can email me. Um, sarah@tonertutoring.com or sarah@nicits.org. Uh, and I will see you guys in a couple weeks. Have a good one. Bye.